Last room's on. Everybody's crazy.
How are you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Okay. Well, we need to sign anything for us to get up and speak during the park?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The mayor will just say anybody who wants to speak can just stand up and go to the platform.
You're Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
I tried to call your number, but the city gave me a number that's not working for you.
Oh, really? That's a shame.
You're District 3, right?
I'm District 5.
Likeable by the regional park?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I tried to call you yesterday and it kept showing as a non-working number, so I called the city and then they gave me a number and I called it and it just showed as non-working.
How's everybody? Pretty good, you some warm, huh? How are you?
All right, how are you?
Oh, busy day today.
Back out of the rings?
Running around, uh, taking my wife to doctor's appointments. Ah, dang, I like that shirt.
That's what we do now.
That's what we do now, yeah. Exactly. Why is, why is the mayor got all the candy all the time? How are you today?
Judge Stewart, I talked to you earlier on. You saw it over here.
What? Yeah, wait, yeah.
Hey, sir.
I'm looking at it today.
How are you?
Did you have a bird back from that day?
No, I was hanging.
I'll see, I'll see if I can get it.
It's very small, like behind the wheel.
Yeah. I'll get that and also.
Hey, Chuck.
I was at work, so when you called, that's why I couldn't make the call, so. But, yeah, I'll get you the tail number for that one.
She said she didn't have any message for you.
Uh, no, the tax, actually, no. The city has the 65% of the freeze rate, which is handled through the county. And then anything that's ability you have is, that's state level.
You shouldn't have, yeah, actually, no.
We can't go off on that or anything. Because like for me, I'm a person at the same point, so.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. I, I, you don't have to argue for me, I don't mind looking at it today. I agree. I have to look at our ordinance and see what allows and what they're actually violating. There is a process.
Technically, it would be.
And it's not, it's not as fast as you, I think. Agree. It's a, this particular issue is egregious. There's power that's out there. It's 10 feet wide, 12 feet wide.
That's why mine, me, is, I was under an accident. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've been helping a lot of veterans.
I'll go back by there on my way home and see if it's like.
X rates.
On the way home after this.
Disability rates.
Yeah, it's not, it's not free.
Because they weren't given the right ratings, although since I was raised in between Wilford Hall and Audi Murphy, I learned the correct levels and what they're looking for and everything, so I'm helping a lot of veterans to submit the packets.
I'd be serious to get what I think is fair, so.
Yeah, oh, I've, I've, I've known people that they acknowledge that, yep.
You hear the mayor make decisions like this. New subdivision won't cost existing.
And everything like that.
Tax rate. They're new face for new. Old songs take old songs. So. Well, I might hopefully explain something.
There's entries that should only flag.
Hi. I don't get that at all.
Agreement was 950 homes, that's what we've got on the development.
That one of my guys fell out of the back of a Humvee.
I know. And with the rest, I think people are just buying this stuff up. It, I did a presentation a few weeks ago about it, like all the land that was by developers.
So, yeah, so I've just been helping a lot of people, veterans, anyway, that's getting ready. To submit correctly, that way they can provide one the first time, or not have to pay the same.
Well, the county's working on a portion that takes it north of the golf course and back down. So that would be a longer term thing, but this one at least, what really stresses me happens is the stuff going on by the worst of the line of trade code.
Yeah, I know.
I'll say it knows.
How are you? Hi, I'm Sheena. I like the river glass, I have pretty.
I had my ears done. It was pretty thick on that carpet, and then after that.
Mine's the one that she and Blue and not a member, I'll tell you the one I saved from that story, buddy.
Unless you got enough money to buy all the properties. I would do that, but I don't have that money.
He's from Germany.
It's a tough thing. I was driving this morning, actually, we go and work out in San Antonio in the morning.
And then that's our female, she's 12 years old, Germany. And then that's our Czechoslovakia.
I wouldn't be surprised if.
You hear me yelling Loki, that's worse, he's beautiful.
They're, they're on the two streets that are open.
Hopefully we'll stay on top of it.
Hey, how are you, sir? Mr. Crowsey, you doing good? How do you spell your name? Okay, Todd Schurhard, nice to meet you. Fresh on the job, huh? Don't even have a uniform yet. Welcome to Castroville. Hope you enjoy your stay here and stay, and stay safe. Are you living anywhere close? Okay, I know where you at, it's 1283, close to the lake. That's not, that's probably pretty country, except when it's dry, huh?
Hey, how's it going?
Good deal.
How long you been here?
Oh, here you go.
I'm sure you had some experience somewhere else, huh? Okay, very good. Good deal, welcome aboard. If we can help you out anything, just gotta holler, the chief don't help you.
Have any problems with you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we got a home run there, too. You guys and him, so.
Two hours.
Thank you. Hey.
I just did that.
Damn, somebody put the memo out that everybody's gonna watch checks today.
I gotta cut them a figure, too, and I keep, like, anytime I touch stuff, I'm trying to be really diligent about that.
Yeah.
Me and Herb got shots, leave, I'm welcome. Hi there, welcome over.
Y'all look awful nice.
Yeah, thanks. We got the memo.
There you go. Yeah.
I swear here and tonight, I didn't know that was on the agenda.
I didn't know it was white shirt.
Oh, I know, oh, I'm sure.
We'll see you around.
Scott, I didn't get the white shirt, did I? We thought it was black shirt.
I didn't order.
That did, huh?
There's always at least three who don't pick it in.
You think you're okay?
Damn. City seal, you're good.
You always look nice, as always, David.
You're just squishing so you can get something else.
Yeah, you know what I'm going with that.
Hey, don't these machines do this?
I don't think so. I'm there worrying who.
Then how do I get this thing to?
Well, this should work.
Yeah, show me how it works online.
Disconnect this keypad, I think it should go to touchscreen, like this. Now it should be touchscreen. There you go.
Okay, but then if I connect this back on?
See, you lose that. You gotta, you gotta use that mouse. Herb, Herb told me a mouse is the deal, and it is the deal. I'm gonna touch it better. Way better with a mouse.
I got a laptop.
Yeah, it's connected, here.
I have a, I have a square touchpad on my desktop, that's all I use.
So then, Mr. Microsoft? Oh, there it is. Hey, it works. You can, see, I just had to say, Mr. Microsoft.
Sit down next to him and it worked. But you got all the candy.
I did bring this in the back.
How are you?
I also did it on my iPad.
Can't physical guy.
225 pages. I know.
All right, Debra, you ready? All right, so let's bring the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. We'll start with the roll call.
District 1, Shane Martinez.
Paul Carey, District 2.
Philip King, District 3.
Todd Schurhard, District 4. Herb Dyer, District 5.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Armored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Actually, if we don't have somebody here, I'll give it today. Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for entrusting us with the responsibility of taking care of all of these people and being responsible, and please guide us as we go through this very critical time where we are representing people and guide our thoughts, our questions, our decisions to the best of the people that we represent here. Thank you for all that you do for us.
Amen. Thank you.
All right, so next will be citizens' comments. If anybody would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and just please keep it two, three minutes for this portion. Please.
Hello, my name, can you hear me through the mask?
A little bit. If you want, I mean, you're far enough away in my.
There you go.
My name is Eleanor Purnell. I live at 236 Mariela Drive, which is in the Patrancow Ranch subdivision, about six miles outside of Castroville. My husband and I moved to this area about three and a half years ago, and, to Texas, about three and a half years ago. And one of the first things I did when I came here was go to the library, because libraries are dear to my heart. And you have got a great library, wonderful staff, very helpful. Will order books from wherever you need them, or through the inner library loan, et cetera. The only downside to your library is it's a great little library. And Castroville, based on what you're, what you've got even on your agenda with all these developments coming in, is growing, or will grow over the next few years. And all I want to ask you to do is keep a budget spot for the library. You want your library to grow as Castroville grows. I read an article many, many years ago that said the best way to revitalize, revitalize a neighborhood in decline, which Castroville is not, but the best way to keep Castroville vibrant and growing is to have a vibrant and growing library. You've got a great library, it's just a little small for what I think Castroville is going to be. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deb Whitaker, 1406 Gentiles, and I'm the angry neighbor from around here. But today, I'm not gripping at any single individual, but things are lacking severely. And so I get very concerned when I see proposed tax increase, and I see absolutely no improvements as far as the drainage that I've complained about for years. My neighbors have complained about it longer than I have, and they always say, well, it's a budget issue. And there's always a budget for a new thousand home community, and one more chicken place, because we needed that, you know? But if anybody would drive my neighborhood, it would be in direct conflict with what the nice young lady said, because it is in decline. We've got two people within blocks of my house living in storage sheds that would not pass any code compliance issue in the world. Another guy living in a traveling trailer with just a water hose hooked up to it, no sewage. I'm sure it wouldn't pass anything, and, and my complaints fall pretty much on deaf ears, but anyhow, and while they say the wheels of justice turn slow, the decline I'm seeing of my neighborhood is going rapid. So, and I mentioned to the mayor yesterday, I think whoever's handling the park now much better than it has been in several years. And so I'm seeing improvement in those areas. But if you saw what it would be doing to all of our property values, if you saw that in your neighborhood, what's going on right by regional park, I beg you to look at the corner of Lisbon and Geneva. And, I mean, what was one sack of garbage yesterday is now washers and dryers laying out on the ground, and just people cooking out of garbage cans, and living in storage sheds with an extension cord hooked up to it. It is wrong, and it should not take. There ought to be, between the city attorney and compliance board, there ought to be some way of resolving this quickly instead of every, every person that sees what's going on thinks that they can now do that in their backyard. And I'm trying to decide if my storage shed would be considered a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. So, I'm gonna leave it with you guys, but thank you.
Thanks, Doc. Now, we got anybody else? Please.
Hi, good afternoon. So if, this is my first meeting here, so I'm sorry I haven't been more engaged. But if this has already been brought up before, my apologies. But I do want to comment, my name is Ginger Pocock, and I live at 1305 San Hizindo. And my comment is about the stoplights in town, I'm sure you're all well aware. And the town, and some of the stoplights, the delay time between the crossroads and the main highway are pretty long. I can be waiting maybe five minutes to get onto Highway 90 off of some of the streets, as you're aware. And I'm wondering if there's any way possible to make those stoplights more traffic-directed, or, you know, where they have the sensors that can sense whether or not there's traffic coming in the other direction or not. I think that would, in the long run, help us to save on some of the pollution as the city continues to grow, some of the emissions, I think these are all things that we should consider. If you haven't already, I, I think it would just be something that, that's kind of overdue.
Could you spell her last name for me? I can catch it.
Yeah, Pocock, P-O-C-O-C-K.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Anyways, John Collins, 219 River Bluff, and comment on that, I think if you could make the stoplight on Highway 90 longer, then that would, I mean, dream longer, then that would help the traffic flow significantly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Merz, I live at 148 Village Path. I wanted to comment on the notice I received for the public hearing on tax increases. I, I think this was a rather poor notice, we just received it yesterday afternoon. Luckily, I have a job that's flexible enough to let me get off early on 24 hours' notice, but a lot of people don't, and I'm sure that the people who can't get off an hour early on 24 hours' notice have a lot to say about tax increases. So just, I'd like to sort of challenge you guys to maybe think of moving it back a little bit and try and get these notices out further ahead of time, so that people have a better chance to get here.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to make a quick comment. So just in case anybody's not aware of protocol, we can't actually address any of these things, so I apologize for not being able to address these directly here, it's just by, by law, we can't. If you don't already have my contact information or that of your councilperson, all of our business cards are out here. Please feel free to grab them, shoot us an email, give us a call, we would love to follow up on these.
And I need his last name again, I'm sorry. Everybody's talking too fast for me.
My last name's Merz, M-E-R-Z.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, anybody else? Great, great, thank you. All right, so the next item is our consent agenda. So we have the minutes for August 24th, 2021, regularly called council meeting. The next item is resolution amending the Castroville, so actually, these next two are, I believe that they are changes in the law about how we need to deal with, or the, the things that we need to supply for the police officers, is that correct?
Yes. Due to a recent change in law, we need to update our personnel policies to reflect certain rights that are available to our peace officers. And that's what this does.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to give that clarification. So the resolution amending the City of Castroville Personnel Policy, Section 12.02, leaves to implement the requirement of SB 1359 and amending Section 614.015, Local Government Code establishing a mental health leave policy for the City of Castroville Police Officers. And the last item on the consent agenda is resolution implementing the requirements of HB 2073 and Chapter 180, Local Government Code establishing a paid quarantine leave policy for peace officers. Do I have a motion or any discussion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Great, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, next item is the second public hearing on FY 2021, 2022, opposed annual operating budget. We're gonna open the public hearing at 5:10.
I do have a PowerPoint. It's gonna cover more than just the budget, this is a budget public hearing, but since tonight, it'll be adopting a budget and subsequently adopting a tax rate that's necessary to fund the budget, and then ratifying that tax rate, I thought I'd prove it to go ahead and talk about all of those in this. If you'd like, we can, we can do that now, before we close the hearing. Go ahead. So this is where we are today, we're on September 14th. The original intent was to adopt the budget and set the tax rate, and then at the next meeting do our city council meeting and adopt the fee schedule, the comprehensive fee schedule, but we're doing all that tonight. And hopefully, we're, I, I think we've got everything gathered to be able to have all the facts and to do all three of those things.
Oh, can you go back just one really quickly? So, just so that everybody's aware, this is a fairly regular thing, budget cycle is always gonna be in this order. So this is the, the time every single year that we're gonna be adopting the budget. So every year, if you want to get in front of it, we have budget sessions. We had, if you look at all of the workshops that we did, in each one of these, I know it can be, for, not everybody's interested in this. I was going to this on and off, you know, before I got onto council, it was a very educational portion of understanding how the city budget works. If you want to get more details on that, these are open meetings. We, we go over in great detail through all of this stuff, and you can see what some of the process is. So just wanted to make sure that people were, sorry?
Well, I was just gonna say, the public hearings are always published in the newspaper ahead of time, at least two weeks to, I wanna say these were down a month ahead of time, two-week intervals, so it helps.
One of the things we can do is make sure that it gets included in the newsletter, that the budget calendar gets included in, so when we start the budget process, just keep that calendar going as a separate calendar. I don't want to confuse folks, but, but we can certainly do that, or at least highlight the items, the budget-related items on the upcoming agendas.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, I appreciated the fact that it was in here, because it, I mean, this is a first to have it in that level of detail in the, I assume that you saw it in the utility, yeah, the newsletter? Like, historically, we have not done that.
Right. The idea is just trying to get the word out as far and wide as it can.
Is that what you're asking, that question?
I think it's also important to mention that those dates are not fixed by us, those are mandated by the state, so.
Well, deadlines mandated by the state. Some of them are, some of them aren't, so we have to work backwards. When we start the public hearings, so working back to basically August the 10th, more or less, those begin, become mandated, base, and it is a little bit like, you know, college, college algebra, where you have to figure out, okay, you know, when did the train leave the station? How many minutes between that train and the next train? It's that kind of math, where you have to really figure out, okay, what dates can we do things on? And how do we make that fit into our regularly called meetings? And so that's, that's what you're seeing here tonight. And I, I think one of the questions was asked was if we. And I think one of the questions was asked, was if we didn't, for whatever reason, didn't adopt the tax rate tonight, what would happen? And I'll be honest, neither Deborah nor I know, because I don't know. I mean, we've done everything to meet the law to do it tonight. If you decided not to do it tonight, I know it has to be adopted by the 28th, but the budget that we proposed is supposed to be accepted no later than tonight. Like, this is the last night you can do that. So, once you propose a budget, well, then the tax rate to support that budget has to happen in a certain period of time, and it wouldn't be the 28th, I don't believe. So, it gets real hairy real quick. But this is where we're at. Tonight, we're taking care of everything, I hope, and hopefully, you've got all the information you need to make good and sound decisions. So, what were the goals for the FY 21-22 budget year? The first and foremost was to adopt a balanced budget, and that's defined as expenditures do not exceed revenues. And ideally, you're not trying to balance budget with fund balance. I know there are other communities that will tell you, they adopted a balanced budget, but they used fund balance to do that, and that's, in my opinion, not a balanced budget, because it's not sustainable. We also look to control our operations and maintenance costs, and two specific kind of sub-goals of that were to outsource HR and payroll, and streamline the data input and customer service process. And then to provide policymakers with important data and information, and lastly, to position the city for capital investment. So, starting off with that first goal of adopting a balanced budget, there in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the total expenditures, proposed expenditures for this budget year, it's $3,417, or $417 and $3. And you'll see that's significantly less than the prior year of $4 million and change, but a big chunk of that, about half of that savings is in capital. So, we stripped out a ton of capital. And then here's our revenues, and again, just looking at that lower right-hand corner, it's the exact same number. That's not by magic, as I've shared with you before. We did that on purpose. We tweaked the revenues to make sure. The revenues are conservative, the way you budget. We always budget revenues conservatively and expenditures conservatively. What that means is, we budget a little bit more than we think we're actually gonna spend, and we budget a little bit less than what we think we're actually gonna receive. So, we fully anticipate that if you adopt this budget tonight, we will have some amount of overage at the end of the year. What that ends up being really depends on a lot of different things. What happens in the middle of the year, how much revenue we get, et cetera. So, this is a balanced budget. So, goal one achieved. These are just a couple of the items that went into the budget that impacted it this year. One was outsourcing HR. That had significant costs. It ended up being budget-neutral through a number of things that we're doing on the, you know, internally to make that budget-neutral. But then we also added longevity. Did a couple of things for employee retention, offering a retirement matching plan that's up to 2%. Of course, it's gonna, the amount, or the cost is gonna depend greatly on how many people participate. What we budgeted was the full amount, as if everybody contributes, but we know that probably won't happen. So, the total increase was about $77,000. And then, these are the revenues that we did to make, to kind of fill in that gap, and that's sales tax, property taxes, the two largest contributors, increased other revenue by a little bit, and our utility transfer by just under $5,000. So, these were the goals. Adopt a balanced budget, or at least propose one. Given ourselves kind of a red act there, because although we did outsource HR and payroll, we're still working on streamlining the data input and customer service process. But that's a work in progress, as you know, and hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have some solutions in place that will help make our, that operation cost, the people cost of customer service, a little bit more sustainable and predictable. And then provide policymakers with important data and information. I hope that that's been done. I'm putting a checkmark, but I would lean on you to really answer that question. And position the city for capital investment. And what I meant by that was, kind of, this slide shows what the ultimate goal here is. So, the M&amp;O rate, that's that middle line in the middle, it's bold in black, the year 2021, you'll see that the total asset value, 287 million, it's slightly higher than the 240, 270, it's in our slide, and that's just because our financial advisor is using, the tax assessor uses a very conservative number, and he's using what our actual value, our projected value is. But you'll see, those are the year-over-year changes in that base tax value, 12% from 17 to 18, a little, about 11 and 1/2 in 2019, from 18 to 19, and then 19 to 20, only about 6 and 3/4% in 2021, almost 7% increase. So, that's how our base value has grown. The M&amp;O rate that is being proposed, you'll see what's happened to that as well. In the past year, 17, 18, 19, 20, that fluctuated from .46 up to .47, and then back down to .46. This year, what we're proposing is .4385, so almost three whole pennies less than prior years in the M&amp;O rate. And what I wanted to illustrate for you is, and this is kind of building that capacity for investment, as the, if we were able to adopt a, and I just put the ceiling, the .5381 is the ceiling. It's the highest tax rate you could legally adopt tonight. As that M&amp;O rate continues to go down, and the concept there is, we don't add general fund costs in future years. That our, we maintain our operations and try to spend about the same amount of money as we're spending today, right? And that's how you do that. You just, if we do, if we're able to do that, then the M&amp;O rate naturally will decline. And if we maintain our total rate, then the excess, of course, goes over to the INS side. And that's why I'm talking about positioning us for investment. Tonight, what this would do is take what would be our INS rate if we do nothing, and you'll see that in just a minute, of .026, and we increase it to .0996. That's about 7 cents. 7 cents equates to several million dollars of borrowing. It doesn't pay for all the things that we need to fix, but it gets us started down that process. And as we kind of hold our tax rate steady, we are able to add additional capacity as value grows. Now, what do we know is gonna happen in '26 and '27, the years that are not pictured? We're gonna have a tremendous amount of development out on the west side, or the east side of town. That's gonna, could, you know, we're estimating could as much as double our tax base. So, when that happens, we're creating a tremendous void, if you will, in the INS rate, where we can actually backfill that to some extent. Law only allows us to adopt rates for existing issuances. And so, we have, we have existing issuances that allow us to do that to a certain point tonight, but.
Scott, if I might interrupt, just for clarity, I just wanted to identify the M&amp;O and the INS.
Sure, I'm sorry, maintenance and operations, yep, and INS and interest in sinking. So, maintenance and operations are the money that are spent just to do operations, just to maintain the city and pay the people to do their jobs, pay for the equipment, that kind of thing. INS is strictly for interest in sinking, for debt service, for paying down debt. And right now, we have a very, very low INS rate, because we haven't issued any debt in recent memory. And I do have a slide to show you what the issuances look like. So, what are our options? You know, we talked about these before. Option one is to do nothing, so we don't issue, we just basically adopt that .4385 rate, drop the rate necessary to pay the bonds the way we have in paying them. You'll end up with a considerably lower rate, and you'll continue to spend fund balance, whatever cash you have on hand, as needed. We do not have enough cash on hand to fix all of our issues. If we did, that would actually be a viable solution, but we don't. Option two would be preserve the historic tax rate, and I'm using this, this is tongue-in-cheek, because really, I mean, you could call whatever you wanted the historic tax rate, but .5233 is the highest rate that we've had in the last three or four years. So, if we moved back up to that rate, it's not going all the way back to that rollback, or to the maximum amount before actually taking it to a vote, but it gets us partway there, right? And we're able to borrow some. And then option three is to go ahead and go all the way up to where the maximum, which is, there's, the delta's not big. I mean, .5233 and .5381, you're talking about less than a penny and a half difference in tax. So, here's your do-nothing option. Your total tax rate would be .4649. That's the O and M at the top, operations and maintenance, and the INS down in the lower right, that's your interest in sinking. These are kind of the other tax rate options, and truthfully, you can pick anywhere in the middle, anywhere between .538 and .0, well, .04, whatever rest of it was, .04649, or .4649. And this just kind of shows you where we are in relation to the rest of the county and the rest of Bear County, which is obviously our neighbor to the east. A third of Bear County is already over 50 cents, half of Medina County is over 50 cents, just for comparison purposes. Again, 7 cents is the delta between that .496 rate and the .5381, and 100% of that would go to INS, to interest in sinking. 100% of it would be dedicated for debt service, which, when debt is issued, as you probably may or may not be aware, we will go through a process of establishing, here are the projects that we want to fund this debt. When you go issue debt, it is a contract with the people who buy that debt. When they buy those bonds, if you say, for instance, we're going to use this for roadwork or for streets, and then you try to go use it for something other than that, like parks, or even though it's a nice thing, you can't do that. That's, it's a violation of your bond covenants. So, on the sheet, the top sheet, I'm trying, the official statement of a bond, a bond issuance, is exactly the legal terms of what it'll be used for. And I try to use generic language for that very reason. Get, look at what your capital plans are, what you're wanting to invest in, and try to put, within reason, what we might spend it on, so that way, it does give us some flexibility. But just know that it is earmarked for a specific list of items, and you all will choose what those items are when we go through that process. So, what is next? If we adopt a rate that allows us to issue some debt, then the next thing we do is sometime between October and November of this year, we publish a notice of intent to issue debt. Then in January of 2022, we go and issue that debt. We borrow the money. We will see how much we get. So, what we do know, what we know is our rate, and how much money that should get us. What we don't know is how much we can borrow, because really, that depends on what the market's doing in January, when we go out for bid. If the rates have gone up between now and then, we will get less money. If they stay about where they are, we're gonna get somewhere between $3.5 and $5 million. It depends on, it depends on the rate, right? Depends on what you adopt. But then, once we issue the debt, and we get funded, we'll go issue RFPs for streets, et cetera. I put streets, because obviously, that's the large concern that I've heard from council and from the community as well. And then in July and September, we'll get some things done. Hopefully, we'll start replacing some of those streets.
And drainage.
This is the last two slides, just to show you what our existing debt is. This is general fund debt. You had not seen these slides before. I will, I believe, actually, this is available to you. It's already on the SharePoint. I think I put it out there a couple of weeks ago. It's in the form of a PDF, and I'm trying to remember what it's named. But anyway, this is your existing debt, and then down below, it kind of tells you what they're for. Now, that was something that I think one of the councilmembers asked me about. When you look at this information, you don't necessarily know, well, what did it fund? Where'd this money go? What is GEO and RAF bond? What that means, it's a general obligation refunding bond. And what that is, is when you're, for instance, if you go borrow at 5% 20 years ago, and 10 years later, bonds have these built-in ability to go and refund them at certain times. They're callable, meaning the city can at its election, go back up to the market, and whatever is left to pay on those bonds, they can borrow that amount, pay off the bonds and the bondholders, and now they have a new lower rate. So, that's what the city did. They went out and they borrowed some money to pay off these 2003 and 2004 bonds that were issued at a higher rate. And we, the only time you do that is to save the city money, to save the citizens' money. So, we did that. We saved them some amount of money in doing that in 2012, and then you got some tax notes in 2021. So, that's what these were issued for, just for your information. And then, utility fund debt looks very different. And, you know, I know that there's been significant issues. And you see, there's been a number of them, 13, 13A, 15, 15A. Something to contrast between these two, you can see, these are all paid off by 2026, so in the very near future. The others, they're going all the way out to 2047, and there's not a significant decline in the first four years. You lose about $80,000, $80,000 in debt services, a little over $1 million of borrowing in today's market. So, again, just food for thought.
Can you go back to that other slide again?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
And, you know, you have enough cash on hand to pay these off. You could just go pay off all the debt if you wanted to. It's not advisable, but you do have that ability. And one of the things we do, if we issued in 2022, so if we went, yeah, 2022 in January, first year of debt service would actually be paid from fund balance. We would just use fund balance, the cash on hand, to pay that first payment, and then the taxes would kick in and pay the next payment. So, the first payment wouldn't be due until FY 23, if you issued in January. You wouldn't actually be paying any debt in the current budget year, or the budget year we're looking at, it'd be in the following year. And even that would actually be paid out of fund balance, and that's just part of the strategy, of trying to build a solid financial plan for the city.
And some of the things that you had brought up before, I just want to give a little bit of foundation, a little bit of background to this. Some of the things that we've covered through our workshop is, right now, our debt is incredibly low, which isn't actually very responsible to have it so low, because then we're not actually doing the things that we need to do to support the city. Our fund balances are too high, and our debt is too low. And if you look at what's happened with our streets and with the rest of our infrastructure, it's obvious that money just has not been spent on the things that really need to be spent to keep things going. It's called taking care of, taking care of our place. So, the reason that we're looking at adding debt service, and I say this specifically because I've heard, I've heard numerous accounts of, well, why is the city broke? Why are you in debt up to your eyeballs? And neither one is true. They're both exactly opposite. And so, the reason that we're looking at this is to be more fiscally responsible, to do the things that we're obligated to do, to take care of our home, and to do the improvements for existing Castroville. I'm not talking about adding anything to, we're not paying out of our pockets for the new development. None of this that we're talking about is going to fund the new people that are coming. This is talking about the people who are here. We're talking about taking care of ourselves and our own. So, one of the things that I wanted to hit head-on, I did this in email, I did this on Facebook, did this through as many avenues as I could get it out to folks, just to say, this is my point of accountability personally. I won't speak to council on this, but for me personally, I had committed that I didn't want to raise taxes. I don't like paying extra taxes. But as we start walking through this and seeing what has been done historically, it, from what I can tell, what's been done historically is, we've driven to keep those costs as low as absolutely possible. And if you saw the comparisons, we've been lower than most other cities. But the effect of that is, we're not taking care of our infrastructure. The two biggest complaints that I hear are streets and drainage. There's some other things that people aren't happy with, because we're not maintaining these, we're not taking care of our home here. And so, this is why I actually have to keep myself accountable and say, what I said before was absolutely my intent, and as soon as we can get that down to as low as possible, we shouldn't be, this shouldn't be a ridiculous place to live, but we should be willing to invest a little bit into our city to make it the place that we want to live in. So, when I started looking at this, and I said this to council earlier, I said, you know, I don't want to raise rates, but, you know, I think it came across as, I don't want to raise rates, but if you want to, you go ahead. And that's not really the way that I meant it. I meant that I didn't want to, but I don't see how we can be responsible to the people that we represent without at least considering this. And what we're looking at, I think I looked at it with a 5-cent increase per $100. For every $100 of home, $100,000 of home value, you're paying less than $5 a month. And so, I think the average person ends up paying, what was it, $12 or $13 a month with that 5-cent increase, which is right about what we're talking about. And to me personally, I would be willing to spend that, you know, I'd be willing to spend more than that personally, but it's really about finding out what people want. And so, we've been trying to go out and talk to people. I've not heard a single person, until tonight, hearing all of this information, that has said, I'm against that. I have heard that you need to keep yourself accountable, you need to make sure that if you're budgeting this, you're spending it on what you're actually budgeting it for, which is what Scott was touching on. And so, I totally believe in that accountability. Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure that we were really clear about all of that stuff. Did you have more on this?
I'm done with this. The public hearing is still open.
Flip it to the open, please, the next slide for it.
That's utilities.
There you go.
You didn't memorize that yet?
No.
This is, this is.
I'm having difficulty memorizing that.
This is on your SharePoint, and if you need me to send you a link, I can.
And this is utilities, this isn't?
Yeah, this is utilities. Yeah, this is utility, and what you have out there has everything as well. These are actually the first two pages, or the first page of that summary.
What's the, where's the sewer plant in this project?
Yeah, honestly, I couldn't tell you where it sits, but I would guess it's either the 2015 or 2017.
Can we see the numbers at the bottom? All right, you can't see those.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can't slide them down, I can read them.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's 2015, because that's $9 million, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, it is. So 2015 B is 8.8 million.
8.8.
Yeah, so that'd be the sewer treatment plant.
Yep. Part of the plant.
And then I think the 17 is the water lines across the city.
Yeah, yep. What's that? What's the other?
That's either the force main across the city or the water line replacement project. Those 15, the 15 and the 17, they have to do with the water line.
17 was $1.5 million.
Yeah, and that...
The 15A and the 15, those are both refunding bonds, so your guess is, I mean, they may have been refunding other projects and lumped them together like we saw in the general fund.
I seem to recall someone was saying treatment plant, they refunded it to get a better interest rate or something, and, but that has to be it, because that's not... The three big ones that we've done in that time period, they've put new water lines in some areas of the city. They did a force main across, you know, from the airport all the way over here to bring sewage to the plant, and then, of course, the sewage treatment plant.
At least for just to give you an idea, again, we don't want to go too far afield. We're on budget and tax rate, and it was just, I can see, I can see them.
You're off track.
Yeah, so just to give you an idea of where we are, so if we're talking about issuing new debt, it's always important to understand what debt is there, out there, and what was it for. And so I wanted to show that to you for the general fund specifically, because that's really what we're here to talk about tonight. The utility fund, although we're adopting the budget, as I've shared in the past, we're in the process of that rate study, and that, I believe, is going to be presented on the 28th. It'll either be September 28th or October 26th, one of the next two meetings, where we'll talk about rates and what's going to happen in the utility fund, and how we're going to move forward to take care of those projects. Because that's a completely separate animal from general fund. General fund is just streets, parks, that kind of thing.
Personal.
Appreciate it.
What's typically the interest rate on the bonds? It's got to be very, very secure.
Again, oh, well, it depends on, it depends on where the market is right now. So I think we're around $1.5, is that, is that right, for municipal bonds? That's where our, when we go to do the next, those next steps, our financial advisor will come and do a presentation and let you know what to expect.
And I think it's important for everybody to know, the number one hot button for all of us when we did these workshops is streets and drainage. That was the top priority for all of us across the board, is streets and drainage. So that way, you guys are aware that that's the same feeling across the board, no matter where you live in the city.
Anybody else have comments?
Question. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Can I pause you real quick? So we're actually, we, we're in the public hearings phase.
Oh.
So, no, that's all right.
We get questions from...
Probably want to entertain questions from anybody that's here. If there's no one speaking, we can move on to the items, and y'all can have a discussion to your heart's content on each of the items, whether it's about the budget, the tax rate, or...
I've been doing this too long to still claim newbie, but I'm going to go ahead and do it, so.
Hey, two years.
Two years.
I'll give you two years, you give me two years.
Okay, fair enough.
Claim newbie for two years.
All right. So did anybody here want to comment on any of this? Do you have any questions on this? This is a public hearing, so you're welcome. Please state your name and address.
Ginger Pocock, 1305 St. Hesito. And just a quick question. Again, I'm new to these meetings, so this, I hear a lot about streets and drainage, which I agree with, and you said that that would include the proper city of Castroville, not necessarily like the golf course, right? So do you have a map or plan available publicly that we could review, or I could review, just to see which streets specifically, just so that I know?
Pretty much all of them.
Okay, and then regarding the drainage, is it like the plumbing, like the drainage, like from, because I know there's some issues with previously with the water treatment plant, but is this related or separate?
Rainwater, runoff water.
Yeah, this is storm water, so you think about rain, rain events.
Well, Mr. Whitaker was talking about during that big storm that we had, I've actually got videos of it.
Yeah.
Because I live right next to him. We went down, taking photos of it, and it was two feet deep, 30 feet wide, rushing like crazy.
Yeah, no, no, okay, okay, I wasn't sure which specifically. Okay, no, I get it, I agree.
Can I pass these around?
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, awesome, thanks a lot.
These are some of the proposals, and we're actually going to be talking about, I think we've got that, that's in the...
Agenda.
Yeah, I actually don't have it on the PowerPoint, it's just in your, in your packets, but we can, I can find it and put it up there if y'all want to see it.
Okay. Anybody else?
John Collins, St. Ignorablaugh. I just had a quite, I'm not sure exactly what the actual tax rate increase is. I know that there's limits, and maybe you could address what the limits are, where they come from, and how this compares to the limits.
You know, the other one that might be really beneficial is to show the breakdown. You had this on one of the...
Yeah, the next, the previous slide, I think, had all the, had all the rates on it.
That one?
There you go.
This gives you the breakdown of the range of taxes that we're looking at is between 0.495 is the lowest rate, and the highest rate we're looking at is 0.538123. And tonight, we have to settle on a number.
Somewhere in between.
That's the purpose of the meeting tonight.
So in 2019, we were at .5233. 2020, we went down to .507. This year, we went down to 4, .495. And so in order to get the streets done and everything, that's why we're looking to bring us back up to .538.
And what, I think you're asking the impact to you personally as, as a homeowner.
Yeah, well, what, how much of a rate change is that actually going to be?
So it's, I think what we're looking at from 2021 to the max rate that we can, that we can legally adopt, without taking it out to a vote, is about five cents per $100 of value?
It's actually, it's, so it's about seven cents, and that's the, that's the range of difference between the floor of what we can adopt and what we would adopt, because where you start from is the minimum amount for operations and maintenance, and the minimum amount for existing interest and sinking and debt. And that rate, that floor is .49, 4649. So that's the floor that we start at. That's the minimum rate that this council can adopt tonight. The maximum rate that they can adopt is that .538123, but .5381, I think, is what we settled on.
So if we drop it down to, from the .495 down to the .46 whatever, then that means no projects, nothing additional, we are just operating and maintaining. That's no street work, that's no additional...
But to your point, the difference between .495 and .5381 is actually even less. It's not seven cents, it's only like four, given what you're paying today at current rate. Now, if you're over the 60, we didn't cover this, but, because I don't have a slide on it, but anyone over the age of 65 that has, that owns their own home and has applied for the exemption, you're already frozen. So the year that you applied for that exemption, your tax rate and tax amount were frozen at that rate, whatever that rate was. And it's different for everybody, because it depends on the year that you applied for it, the year you turn 65. So for those folks, there, no matter what the city does tonight, it doesn't affect you at all, because you don't pay anything above and beyond. Those of us who've not attained that age yet, we get to wait.
But the rate is actually less than the maximum that you could do, right?
The current rate in 2021 was .495?
But the increase is less than what you would, what you're capped at, I guess, by, I guess, the state, is it?
The state, so the maximum amount we can adopt by law is .538 without taking it to the voters, for them to go vote on, under current Texas law. So 538 is what the, what the council can do without taking it to a vote. If they go anything above that, it has to be taken to the citizens, and they have to be allowed to vote on that rate.
You had a, I'm sorry. You had a slide on a $200,000 valued home, what the tax, depending on what the rate would be?
Yeah, but I have them here, they're just...
We can discuss it, I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry. Get ahead of the game.
Well, I think that it's, we...
That answers the question.
It answers the question that happened during the public meeting. Is that still okay?
I know all of us here...
We're just trying to stay in the law here.
I know all of us here aren't seniors, but that senior exemption or that tax freeze, Castroville is the only town that...
In Medina County.
In Medina County that has a tax freeze for seniors.
And that's what this slide highlights. It just shows our different exemptions and exemption amounts for all the cities in Medina County. We're the only one that has a freeze, and that's kind of what I was explaining before. And then I think there was a question about the average home value. Why is this not for, going for? Okay. So the average home value is $203,000 in Castroville compared to the other cities. We are almost double the next highest, which was 108 in Divine. And for the average homeowner, current taxes, not whatever they're proposing, because honestly, staff doesn't know what tax rate will be adopted, but just looking at 2020 tax rates, that .495, that's the city rate at the top. The total tax amount for the average home value of $203,000 was $1,006. And again, this doesn't take into account if you're over 65, what your exemption was, et cetera. It's assuming that you're, that you're, actually, it's assuming that you are not 65 as the date of 2020, and that these are the rates you pay. You can see that, you know, to Medina Valley ISD, and it ranges, the city, you're paying $1,000, Medina Valley ISD, you're paying $2,700. Your total tax bill would have been about $5,300 for a home that was valued at $203,000 last year. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
You're very welcome.
And a couple of other, like, just quantifications here. That's why I wanted to break it down to what is it going to cost you a month for the average cost? I actually used $230, $230,000, and it was, like I said, it was like 12 or 13 bucks a month. Actually...
Based on a $200,000 home?
Based on a $230,000 home.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just over $10 a month. So, and actually, most of that is being, over 60% of the revenue derived from this is actually coming from the value of the businesses, not from the value of the homes, because there are lots, we have lots of exemptions out there, not everybody's obligated to the entire amount because of military disabledment or senior discount, the things that he went over and the other thing. Cool. Any other questions? I just want to make sure that we're covering this really well. Please again, state your name and address.
David Merz.
David Merz, M-E-R-Z, 148 Village Path. And I'm one of those weirdos who's allergic to debt. So just out of curiosity, like, how many years would it take to do this street refurbishment project without ever issuing bonds? You already said that we have too much money in our funds and not enough is being spent. So what if we just spent the money we had instead of borrowing money from other people and then having to raise taxes again eventually to pay the interest on the money we just borrowed?
I think you can, that is an excellent question. I think that the city finances, like, I'm with you. Like, personally, I hate debt. Sometimes, if you think about, as a lot of us, when you want to get a nice new place, you may finance it if you don't have, like, you know, the funds to do it. The fact is, we don't have the funds to do everything that we need to do right now. And there is a strategy in putting this together that, that is actually really beneficial and the interest rate that we pay. I'm getting into your area of expertise, so I'm going to shut up.
And big projects are more affordable and more efficient than small projects. We could do small projects, but we're going to spend more money in the long run to get to the, to the goal.
Well, if we can, let's just take streets as an example. So the question was, can we use our, the money we have on hand? We're about to add about $1 million to the, to the already, and I honestly can't remember what our fund balance is, the general fund, $3 million and change. We're about to add another million. So we will have a full year of operations in fund balance, which is not, we only need about six months. I mean, six to nine months is plenty, or 120 days, I think, is what they try to, try to tell you to have. So we have considerably more than what we need. However, it's not enough to do all the streets. So, and it depends on the standard. So a lot boils down to, well, how, how good you want those streets to be. So we could have gravel roads everywhere and be fine, because the cost for gravel roads is relatively inexpensive. The machinery and expertise to maintain the gravel roads is relatively minimal. We could, we could do that. A chip seal road is just one step above that. We've talked a lot about what it would take to do chip seal. If we wanted to own our own machinery and equipment and maintain these roads, we would need to invest in some machinery. We do not have enough money to invest in the machinery and do those roads. The other option would be to outsource it, and if we outsourced the, if we, if we used 100% of the excess funds just on roads and just to outsource to get the chip seal done, we'd probably be able to do 20% of the roads that need to be done.
20% in a year, or?
No, well, 20% period. Because once the money's gone, it's gone. And, you know, we would recommend doing as much as you can, because you're going to get more, for every dollar more that you increase, the, the, the project, you're going to get a little bit more efficiency out of it. So one of the things that we've, we've learned from trial and error in the city is, as you do smaller projects, as Commissioner Carey, or Councilman Carey was talking about, we have right now a project that was let, we had estimated it was going to be $200,000. Well, now it's more like $260,000, and it's only a couple of roads, right? So what we'd want to do is go, the plan now is, if we borrow funds, we're going to use a million or so a year and address all the streets within a reasonable timeframe, and then also build a maintenance program so that ideally, we aren't going back and fixing these roads every 10 to 15 years and having to put brand-new roads in, but we're able to maintain them and get longer life out of the road and make it more drivable. But these are good questions. I mean, it's all, it also comes down to equity. When you, if you think about it this way, too, and this is just, this gets into the kind of the theoretical side of just ratemaking, and when it's appropriately issued debt and when it isn't. Generally, again, sound financial practices, one of the things they recommend, and when I say they, the people who write the books that I read that tell you how to manage a city and manage finances responsibly, they suggest that if it's, if it is a life that other people are going to enjoy, whether it's a library that's going to last for 50 years or 35 years, where that facility is, the road that's supposed to last 20 years or 15 years, if it has a time period that's greater than the, and it's going to be enjoyed by more than the people who are paying for it right now, then really, issuing debt is a responsible method to make sure that there's equity in paying for that thing, because not everybody who lives in Castroville lives there, lives here now. And not everybody that lives here now will live here in 10 years. So this is a way to make sure that the people who are enjoying that thing 10 years from now are also paying for that thing 10 years from now. Again, not trying to advocate one way or another, just sharing kind of the theory behind...
And the other way to look at it, if you think about just right now, so we have 1,400 homes in Castroville. We have another 950, according to the development agreement with Alsatian Oaks, so that's almost double right there. And I think that it's going to happen a lot sooner than any of us had anticipated, but as we issue debt, then as those homes get built and we start collecting taxes on those, then they're actually paying to improve existing Castroville because we've spread the debt out across multiple years.
And that's, that's actually a big part of the strategy, is, right now, we have a two, two and a half cent debt if we do nothing. The existing, existing Castroville has a way. We already know that there are some issues that will come along with growth, undesirable issues. There's not a lot that we can do about that as a city. Unless you own all the land, you cannot control growth. What you can do is try and direct it through standards and other things, but whatever we do, there are going to be some negative consequences to this growth. One positive outcome that can happen if the city fathers, if the council people take that step, is that once those values come on the books, if you have an INS rate that is substantial, that group, the, the new homeowners, even though they're just brand new and they had nothing, they're going to get to, just as I was explaining before, they're going to get to help pay for all the roads and pay for whatever else the city invests in, and it'll actually leverage the ability to issue more debt without raising the tax rate. The tax rate would stay the same, but you'd get, basically, if, if they had double the value, you'd get double the opportunity for investment. That doesn't happen all at once, it has to happen over several years, but it is something that, it's a strategy, that again, if you go back to what the, the focus of the budget was and what the aim and objective was, it was to set the city up for the ability to go and invest, make capital investments without increasing the, the operations and maintenance sides. We decrease the operation, operation maintenance by about three pennies, and we're putting all those pennies into INS, and instead of saying, let's just spend a few hundred thousand dollars and putting that in our budget, we're saying, no, we're going to, we're going to stick that aside and be able to issue larger, do larger projects for millions of dollars where you get bigger bang for the buck, make more improvement, and leverage that same, those same dollars that we would have collected and just stuck in the bank or collected and spent on a, on a very expensive small project, we can use those to pay down the debt over the long term. That's the overall strategy, I think you all are familiar with it, we've probably talked about it enough, but for those who are here that may not have heard it before, that's, that's the goal.
And if you were going to discuss-
I'm a Ramsey fan, so, Dave Ramsey anyway, he's, he's a big believer in being debt free.
I'd just like to point out, this is about the seventh meeting, it's not like all this was decided at once. This council has met at least seven times, some of those were all-day meetings, not just a couple hours. So, we've been through all this in very great detail, and we're not just focused on streets, we have as big a problem with storm drainage as we do with streets, maybe bigger depending on where you live in this town. So, the consensus of all these meetings is we're focusing on streets and drainage primarily, and we're going to try to do as much else as we can do by leveraging the available fund balances to borrow money.
And streets and drainage, drainage projects in particular cannot be accomplished piecemeal, you've got to attack it, you've got to do the whole thing, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good question.
Yep. All right, anybody else? Thank you for your participation, thank you for the involvement, thank you for caring, we appreciate the feedback. All right, if there's nothing else, let's close the public hearing at 6:56.
5:56.
5:56, there you go. We're going to have to get a digital clock, apparently I'm not smart enough to read analog.
Bill, will you help him remember time stamp stuff?
All right, the next item is city administrator report.
And I'll, I'll keep this very brief, there are, I will mention this, I think Ginger Hokoc mentioned, and it's in my report, so I can actually speak to it, a couple of things, one of, it's one of my staff members pointed out that I almost had the entire alphabet, I didn't realize that, I wouldn't buy, it was just the way it worked. I had almost 27 items, so we made it to item V this time, V for Victor. I'm not trying to get to Z, to be honest, if I have to start double lettering these, that's going to be a problem. But, one of the items in the report that you'll see is an update on our Tech dot lights and bridge inspection, it's one of the things that council had asked about at least two meetings ago. I have reached out to Tech dot, I don't, I don't think my report provided an answer, but that is something that, that we're working on Tech dot for the benefit of the, I know the council knows this, but the benefit of the gallery, we have zero, and I mean zero, control over lighting, you know, traffic lights on 90. But, we do, they do listen, they're good partners, Tech dot is, and so, you know, we have voiced our concerns and they're dealing with it. They were subject to some, some internal, what you call it, technological issues, technology issues-
Interfiltration.
-a while back, and that, that put a big damper in some of the things that they're trying to do in lighting controls, so I don't want to delve into that too much, but be that as it may, we're working with them diligently to make sure that gets resolved, along with a bunch of other stuff, so.
I don't know if anybody noticed, but there's been a survey crew up and down Highway 947.
That is for Alsatian Oaks, that's not Tech dot, that's part of the requirement.
But, it's all data, that's all data that goes into the system.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, once they get that, that's your developer pain to, to put in that victory lane crossing or whatever that is.
Country, village, estates.
Yeah. No, well, no, no, it's not country, village, it's Alsatian Oaks, it's part of their, yeah, their improved, it's their improvements to-
Hopefully, they'll get that, that covered.
Right.
They're poor in today.
So, if y'all have any questions on my report, feel free to ask them now, but I'm going to have to do a presentation.
Question one.
Yes.
Animal control activity.
Yes.
You, you put the updated report from Blue at the back.
Yes.
What is the difference between animals returned to property and cats returned to owner and dogs returned to owner? If you say animals removed the property, is that something other than a cat and a dog?
That's the, I'm going to make that presumption, I haven't asked that question, but I know that he, he does get horses and everything you can think of other than dogs and cats. So, if he specifically said dogs and cats and then animals, it's other animals that do not, that are not a dogs or cats that get returned to owner.
He said he lost skunks.
April's very clear that he cannot bring the skunks back.
Yes.
Lot of skunks.
Well, for the citizens, they ought to be, on this report, which you all can't see, but wild animals trapped, that was 10, so, that was, that's where the skunks are.
Skunks.
He's had 36 in one, you know, during the spring, he gets a lot.
And, and we have some in our yard, so, and the only other thing, it says animal control calls, and he has 25, but there's only 22 items here, so I don't know if that's-
Some of those could be, yeah, could be other, other issues that weren't quantifiable in those terms.
But, if you don't mind verifying that, that, that other thing was animals other than cats and dogs.
I'm all positive it is, but I will, I know we've talked to him about, I mean, he, he made that comment when he was here the last time he met with the council, was that he deals with more than animal, I mean, he, he deals with horses and cows getting out, I mean, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Goats, that's right.
Dogs, pigs.
Now, I don't want to go with that. The, the other one was the Steinbach House, and you had mentioned this in the hallway to me.
Yes, I thought I'd just throw it out there and see what happens, I did use it the wrong terminology, it, yeah, it's not about giving, we'd have to work out an agreement where we would continue to maintain the building, invest in the building, the concept is that we wouldn't have to put a person at the building, that maybe there'd be a, a different way to do that, and so, those costs, those personnel costs could be moved elsewhere, and the thought process was to combine with either the Chamber or some other group and look at doing tourism and using our fund, that same money, rather than just spending on a person that sits there a good portion of the day, this does have a lot of visitors at different times and different seasons, but put that in the hands of, like, the Historic Society.
And, and so, related to that, because I noticed your, your thing talk, mention that you, you came up with this idea when you were talking to the Chamber, five years ago, the Chambers, that's where their offices were, so it was easy for them to staff it, and then they got the hunk, the vast majority of the, of the hotel, the hot fund money that they used, but then, of course, they came to the city and said, listen, we don't want to promote tourism anymore, we have other goals. So, the city said, well, then we can't give you hot funds, and at the same time, they were moving out of the Steinbach House.
And I'm not recommending that, I mean, I just, yeah.
And, and the only problem, the other historic structure we have here that's owned by the city is the, is the Castro Collins Medical History Center, which has a licensing agreement with the city, and those are all volunteer docents, but they do everything they can just to keep people there on, on Saturdays and Sundays. And, so, the only way they're actually going to be able to keep people at the Steinbach House, we, you know, for the, for the, what we're doing it now is to somehow fund that, and that the only funds are the hot, in other words, we can, we can discuss it down the road, but they don't have the resources to-
Well, that's why I was thinking about maybe looking at a, a cooperative agreement with the, with the state and the Landmark Inn, because they do have docents there that are there all the time, that they pay whether there's people there or not, and utilizing, I mean, we just have to talk, have the conversation, but the thought process was, let's go, if, y'all, I wanted to see what your level of interest was, because if you're interested at all, we'll go have the conversation, they're not committing to anything, but the, the idea is talk to the landmark, potentially, what you do is not have people at those two locations, only have them try to have volunteers on what are busy seasons, whatever, whatever that timeframe is and however you identify that, and the rest of the time, maybe they're closed and the landmark, and there's other information, you have a thing you can scan to get information, do a walking tour where you can see things, but then if you want to actually be in, you have to contact the Landmark Inn, and they send someone over, they open it up, they might be willing to do that, I don't know, I haven't had the conversation, I just wanted to ask y'all first.
Just one second, I just want to make sure that I clarify, the, the reason that this came up, we were talking to, talking to the Chamber, we're trying to really join, join with the Chamber, link arms, and Scott was really, if, if you go over to-
I, I just want to clarify, joint, rather than, rather than the word join, I would say support, collaborate with-
Locking arms.
We're not, yeah, I know, but we're not looking for the Chamber to become a subsidiary of the city or vice versa, it's really about helping each other where we have common goals.
And, and what he was commenting on is when you go to the Berry House, it's this welcoming, inviting, this thing where you're like, let me tell you about Castleville and go check this out, go see this, and it's really giving a greeting, welcoming, encouraging kind of thing. I just wanted to clarify that, and thank you for looking out for that, Herb, I know you've been patient.
I'm all in favor of words like collaborating, but the Steinbach House is a unique thing for this city, it was given to us by our sister city, and I don't think we should be talking about letting it out of the city in any way, shape or form. It needs to be supported, and for, if you're looking at ways to enhance the support, we're all in favor of doing that. But, speaking only for myself, I'm not interested in talking about giving the Steinbach House to anybody.
That was a poor choice of words in my report, Deborah pointed it out to me, I was like, well, that's not what I meant, she's like, well, that's what you said.
But, I realized what your report meant, you were trying to see other groups, but they were, given the responsibility, not the physical property.
We have some obligations with that, Billy, so, literally, we cannot gift it, but we could work out a cooperative maintenance agreement and some other things that would, that would make sure it's better cared for than it is today. That was the goal.
We're just trying to find ways to make it better.
Oh, I agree.
I've got one more question on his report.
Yep.
Is that all okay to ask? The last item in your report, downtown redevelopment plan, you say that we're going to get a briefing on October the 26th or thereafter.
Yes.
I just want to make it clear to the public, City Council has not received any briefings on the downtown redevelopment plans. The mayor and the city administrator, in their roles as city officials, have had many discussions, and that's their job, and I compliment them for what they're doing, but the City Council has not received any briefings. That's the point I want to make. You know, they've been on television, they've been in the newspaper, but they have not been in this council chamber publicly, yet.
And they're planning, you know, they are planning to come, I, I think part of it is getting these development agreements wrapped up, what we're trying to do with those, it's everything in its time and place.
The other development agreements, not, we don't have a-
Yeah, not with them, the same ones that we've got going on.
All right. Any doubts on the report?
Related to your emergency management service, I compliment whoever sent out the notice yesterday about the one horn going down.
That was the blue light special.
So, but, yeah, it's, it's nice to get those updates.
I did get a ques, one of our, so, John Gomez sent that out, we do, the irony is that Monday morning at our staff meeting, and Deborah can be my witness, and the other count, any other staff members can be my witness, I, I talked to all the staff about the need for all of us to be trained, so, we're going to have Terry at the police department set up a training for the rest of the staff so that we can be each other's backup, so that God forbid if there's some major disaster, some other issue, whether it's at the airport, you know, wherever it is, one of the, any one of us can say, okay, hey, I'm on that, I'll take care of the I-N-F-O alert and make sure everybody's aware. So, we just had that conversation, unfortunately, it malfunctioned, but because John was already taking some steps, he was able to get in and, and set out that notice. Following that notice, a comment was made, what do I do when I hear this noise? And, what am I supposed to, get my gun, I mean, they made some comments, and I don't, I don't know where this person's from, I'm not picking on them really, but I grew up in Texas, it is an out, I just want to clarify, that noise, when it does go off, it's, I don't know if it will ever hear it again, hopefully, but, when it does go off, it's an outdoor warning sign, it's meant to say, take shelter somewhere safe, so ideally in a building not made of sticks that will blow away, but go somewhere that's reasonably safe and get out of the open, go, that's why, when you're inside the house, a lot of times you can't hear it, they're not made to be heard inside the house, they're made to warn people who are out and about, outside, that, hey, there's, this, there's an outdoor warning, there's something, being outdoors right now is not safe, go inside. So, if that's your only takeaway from tonight's meeting, I'm happy for that.
Or turn on the news and see which tornado is going to hit us.
Sure, or stand outside and take photos, like a lot of people like that, I mean, that's just, come on.
Yeah, but on a blue sky day, there's-
Sunshine, blue order.
They're testing the system.
All right, anybody else?
No.
That was a very, very thorough through the report, thank you. All right, next item, consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance setting the rates and fee schedule for FY 2022.
In your packets, I think, Deborah, since you updated it with the newest one, and then you also have a printed copy, the changes are highlighted, the, the proposed changes are in blue, the, the old rates, if there are old rates are in red, I will note that the garbage rates on the very back end were not part of the original, well, they were not part of the original packet, but they have been updated because that's contractual, so our contractual rates will go up by 8.6%, that's the contract we have with waste management. We are making that a full 10, I believe, 10% to, just for inflationary costs for administrative and, and customer service, when you think about, you know, we just did a raise for 3%. So, that is, that's what those are, as far as other changes, the coin operated machine, which still is not operational, I know y'all may not be fully aware of that, but I tried to keep you up to date, we're going out for bid now to try and get that thing fixed, we're going to go up on our rate there to just an even 10 cents per gallon, that makes it more equitable for the people who actually have the service where they're at their house, it'd be basically $10 per thousand gallons, and we consider that the standard bill's about 30 bucks for 3,000 gallons, that's, that's pretty good math, so, that's what that is. If you have any other questions about the other rates, the other, the other thing is on the airport fees, we're actually proposing two alternates, my, my reference is to do the second, the latter, so, the first is an actual detail that here's what our hangar rates are, here's what they cost per month to rent. The second option is just a simple paragraph that says that your, our paragraphs, our, our hangers are leased out at a per square footage rate, dependent on the size and the condition of the hangar, your, your costs will vary, see the manager, right, talk to the manager. That is, the, the concept there is that markets fluctuate all the time, and so, putting a proposed rate, you can actually get less than what you really want to get out of a particular rental, so, that's one advantage of doing that. What I am not doing is suggesting that we imbue staff or the city, or the, or the airport manager with whatever rates they want. Going forward, what we do is, is provide a report of here's what the historical rates have been for all these different hangers, here's how often they've been leased, and his, his main objective should be to maximize the amount of revenue you can get from the airport. And, if you're, if you have a hangar that's too highly, you know, costs too much and it sits empty nine months out of a year or a full year, you got zero dollars out of that. If you could have rented that for $10 less and gotten some money, you're better off. But, net, we should be net positive year over year, and so, David Kirkpatrick, who's our airport manager, and I have had this conversation, our recommendation would be that second paragraph, but again, we would need to improve the clarity that has been to the council, which has been non-existent. One of the things that council member Dyer requested, and it's, and again, the irony is, it's not irony, it's just funny, I literally just had the conversation with David about what I wanted to put together, and then like, not, not, I don't know if it was that day or the next day, I got an email from Herb saying, hey, could you put this report together? And thankfully, I'd already asked for it, but, and that is a, a full detailed report of what our lease history has been at the airport, so that y'all will have that as a good starting place, especially if we adopt that second paragraph as the, as the fee. I want you to know, I mean, I, I'm not looking to take the reins away or to hide, I mean, it's not, I, I think there's already enough concern about, well, the airport's a rich boy's play club, that's absolutely not the case, it is a, a very important part of our local economy, it brings a lot of tourism in, there's other, other advantages to having that airport, so, we just want to make sure we're conveying that. So, those are the kind of the major changes in, in the fee ordinances, the others are somewhat minor, we got rid of the tree preservation permit because there is no ordinance there, the fence, I think, used to be based on value of the fence, which didn't make any sense because it really is just $25, and I think there was the starting permit rate for, for homes was like at 75, and that didn't make sense because the minimum value really should have been, the cost should have been $100 if you look at the square footages, it would mean that if you actually had a slightly larger home, you would have, you'd pay less than the, the base fee, so anyway, we, we made those types of changes. If there are any other questions as you look through it, I'll entertain those questions.
On, on the backflow, that, the one that I asked you about-
Yes.
Were after every two years, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
How many?
Well, remember last year when we were looking at this, we saw the ordinance said We saw the ordinance said it's every two years, and the city...
Yeah, there was, well, so I know that our system, we erroneously sent out some bills that shouldn't have been sent out. That was the real issue. It wasn't that we were trying, it just, bills got sent out that shouldn't have been sent out, or sent to some of the people that should not have received them.
Okay.
So that was a real issue.
Every two years instead of annual?
It's every two years for a home sprinkler system that needs to be in backflow, prevention and inspected.
That's the state law.
Yes. And I'm trying to remember if we even collect a fee for that. I think, I think we do an initial, but not on the every two years.
No, but the homeowner pays for the inspection.
Right. But they don't pay us. That's the thing.
Correct.
And I think that was part of it, too, is that we don't actually collect a fee, it's what we require.
I'd rather pay you and have somebody in the city know how to do that.
I would like that, too, but you already know that.
Maybe not as much, maybe half price.
Nice try.
All right, thank you.
Another concern is with that, and this is probably on a different subject, but the backflow preventer. I get some of my constituents complain that they're being singled out because there's sprinkler systems in the neighborhood that aren't being accounted for as far as the backflow preventer. So I don't know how you rig, I don't know how you figure that out, other than, you know, we've got a lot of folks driving around in the neighborhoods all times of the day, you know, employees. If you got a backflow, I wouldn't think you'd just bury it. I would think it'd be a box. Maybe, maybe that's one way to hide it, not have a box and just bury it.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that it is difficult to keep track of, because people do it on the weekend. Yeah, permitting or enforcing permits is very difficult because, again, people like to do things on the weekends. You come in, and all of a sudden, there's a fence, there was no permit, there's no request, you know, it's that kind of thing, so.
Might be a big service for the city to have.
Yeah, agreed.
I guess Cora, if she had a list of the addresses that have a permit...
And we do, we maintain, yeah, we maintain that list. So that, the ones we know about, we stay on top of, but what, to what Councilmember Schierhardt's speaking to, it's just, how do you know about the ones you don't know about, right?
Well, if you're driving down the road and you see a sprinkler going off, then you know.
And it's not, yeah, yeah.
And a knot on the river.
It's a shame we don't have somebody going and reading the meters like every month.
That's how they have to fast develop.
I have a couple of questions. On the airport, I noticed basically all the fees went up, and I don't know which hangers are out there, but I know space number, for the terminal building lease rental, space number 119 and 120, they dropped about $100. Is, what was that about?
I don't know. No, I was talking my head, I can find out, though. The proposed increase was a dollar, or 1.5%. That's what the, when you see them going up, it's going up by average of 1.5%.
Understand that.
I know that we had, that could be the ESD space, if, so yeah, so ESD vacated. They used to do it for 400 bucks for the whole thing. We just got the building fixed, but the whole time it was being repaired, we were talking to folks about trying to get that thing leased. What we were able to do was get someone to agree to lease one of the offices at a lower rate if they pledged to bring another person in to get leased that other spot, and they did, and so we were able to do that. We're also reconfiguring the airport, so I think I spoke to this in my letter, that, or my report, that the manager's office is gonna become the new lounge. The old lounge, I think, is being rented out, and then his office is gonna be where that customer service, like the roll-up door is, looks like a little coffee shop type place. That's where I believe he's gonna be stationed going forward. So concept being, he can maybe get a little better customer service, more visibility being...
I gotta ask, who were, who were written the conference room out to?
I don't, not the conference room, the pilot's lounge.
Oh, the pilot's lounge?
Yeah, so that was, that's basically an office space, it's just got a couch and stuff in it. So that's gonna become a leasable office space, as is, oh, no, I'm sorry, and then David's old office will then be the lounge.
I understand.
Right next to the, you know, it kind of makes sense, it's right up in the front, you have the main entry, anyway. He's put a lot of thought into it.
And the other one that didn't go up, but went down by $100 was commercial number one, Liberty Flying Service. Did we just, why did it go down $100?
Liberty.
Commercial?
Well, I'm trying to remember, that's not Dream Flies, because I know that Dream Flies was one that y'all, yeah, I know y'all approved that one. I think that that was a five-year lease, and that's, that was negotiated, but...
Because it went out five years, it dropped $100.
Yeah, but that was before, I want to say that's before I got here, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's the crop duster.
So it was just on the longer lease, you all dropped the price down?
Possibly. I'll get you, I'll get you a firm answer on what happened there, but...
And what, and I'm trying to find it, I think it had to do with the cost of the billing permit, oh yeah, there it is. Cost of the billing permit, it's in red, $75 crossed out, doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's the one, if you do the math, just look at that one and the one above it and the one below it. If you'd done it based on value, you'd end up with a fee that didn't make sense.
Yeah, $100, 75, and then up.
Right, yeah, it should just be 100 bucks.
I figured it's, because I would go to $20,000.
I didn't do a very good job explaining it earlier.
So we went a little bit out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Kerry, did you have any?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Schierhardt?
No, I don't. You covered it all.
I got one question. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I've been a pain in the city's backside about this issue, and I've sent them lots and lots of questions, and they've taken the time to answer every one of them, and I'm very pleased with the plan, except I have one concern. On the airport fees, if you're going to adopt option B, which I think is a great idea, charge by the square foot, I just would like to make the statement that the City Council should vote on the cost per square foot. That should be a council decision, and it needs the input of all the historical data for us to be able to deliberate and decide what kind of a premium do we feel our airport hangers are worth because we're 20-some miles from San Antonio International Airport.
Yeah, where I put, back on that just a little bit, is that if, let's just, you know, playing devil's advocate, you don't know when a hangar's gonna become vacant, and so if a desirable hangar becomes vacant, and there's an opportunity to release that for, I think what we need to task the manager with is, you maximize the revenue out there, and how you prove that you maximize revenue is year over year, you have more revenue. Like, that's his job, figure out how to sell more fuel, how to get more renters, and to get those renters pay more money. Just figure out how to do that, right? And if there's any other revenue, you know, any other things you can do to bring revenue in, do that as well. Let's figure this out, let's, and I think David, well, one, Dave's a very creative person, he's come up with all kinds of different things, whether it's flight schools, or you're trying to attract people that are gonna be based at the airport to increase that revenue, but that really should be the target, rather than trying to set a rate one time a year, or even multiple times a year, if we do it in executive session, it becomes micromanagement at a level that is unproductive for us. I think if you give him larger targets, but then prove out from a report standpoint, that's what, that's the piece that's missing. So y'all need to have that warm fuzzy, that here's where we've been historically, and I'll be honest, you know, part of the issue, one of the challenges for David is, when he got there, he had some information in a PC, quite a bit apparently. He was in the process of getting that updated, and the PC crashed, and the information was completely unrecoverable. So he doesn't, so that, all that data, all that legacy data is not there. We had, we were keeping manual ledgers up until when? I think you mentioned earlier, like 2015, 16, we had manual ledgers where we kept track of all this. They were thrown out by a prior financial director, or director of finance, is what I was told.
We were a financial director, you're saying clerk?
A clerk, so, so those are gone. So he's having to piece together some of this information, but we're gonna get the best look we can, absent some of the information that we'd like to have. But anyway, some of it, because we do have historic renters, we can actually get some of it back.
But for this one, when it gets adopted, I'm still kind of in the dark. Are you gonna do option A, or are you gonna do option B?
So what I'd ask for is, let us do option B, but you've got a really good idea of what our starting point on pricing is, and that's option A. And I say starting point because frankly, there's room in there. Like 1.5% is the minimum, but if there's an opportunity to get a little bit more, within reason, we're gonna do it.
Are you gonna come back to us with this, or do we just need to make a decision tonight?
No, tonight, you're gonna, well, I'd like you to make a decision on the comprehensive fee schedule tonight, but it really, to me, doesn't matter whether you go with A or B. We're recommending B, but we've always done kind of option A, if you will, as a city. I'm just, it's my job to give you advice, and my advice is that that's a poorer approach to how this is being done. You need to look at it as like a landlord would with their rental properties. Those values, every time it vacates, you're gonna set what that value is based on the market.
It could change.
Right, and it could change unfavorably, right, but it can also change favorably, and you don't want to lock yourself in, and yes, it does change in the middle of the year. It changes whenever there's a vacancy.
It could change based on the client as well.
That's right. And we, but what we don't want to do is have favoritism, and again, I think the expectation you should set, for me and for the manager, is make the airport profitable, or make it, maximize its revenue, I think is what really determines, maximize its revenue. And there's lots of ways to do that, not just through rentals, there's all kinds of other ways, too.
Can, a question related to that, can we as a city make fees that could be more favorable to one course and the other? In other words, are we not required to publish our fees for any kind of legal reasons?
No, because, no, you have to, in fact, by FAA standard, you have to establish a market rate per square foot. You must be charging the market rate. So, for instance, when we sign a, the, well, let's use the farmer land, the farmland. A big reason why his revenue is down considerably is because when we went to go re-lease the farmland, we took it out for bid, and we chose the highest bid, and the highest bid was with the same farmer, but it was considerably less than he had been paying us, because that's what the market was. And that's my example, I mean, that's, that's not hangers, that's the farmland lease, but that's a great example of what can happen, but what we're, that's why we can, yes, you can have different rates, they just have to be market-based. His is, we agreed, and we talked about this, you know, there's other things in his contract with, deal with fences and other stuff, so there are other improvements we took into account, but that's a five-year lease, and for that five-year period, now our department director, our airport manager, he's gonna have to figure out how to, again, we didn't take away, at least I didn't, the expectation that, "All right, well, sucks for you, you need to now go figure out how to get some more revenue for the airport," because he's gotta make that thing float. So, and he knows that, and he's been, I think, like I said, he's a very, very capable airport manager. Y'all are very fortunate to have him. He told me the other day, he's had lots of job offers, and I keep telling him, "You better not leave." So I want to keep him.
He's our first full-time airport manager that I can remember, and I think he's done a bang-up job, and I'd like to give him that free rein.
Yeah, he's very, we're very fortunate to have him.
Can we change him to the building?
Well, I don't think I'd want to. That building's been...
All right, well, I want to, I want to get us moving along. I had a couple of questions on here, but I think that most of them are minor things, just for clarification. The one question that I had was, the, you've got something on here for meter testing requested by customers, meter change-out requested by customer.
Yes.
So when people are trying to figure out what's going on with their meter, I guess what you're saying is that they should be able to have a plumber come over and take a look and see if there's any kind of issues, but if, if they're saying that, because I think that I heard an instance of somebody that had a meter that, that he believed was failing, typically, they fail in the customer's...
Yeah, they don't believe us when we say that, but they benefit the customer when they fail, yes.
In most cases.
So this is when someone insists on it, for whatever reason, they've already got a point, whatever, that they want us to come change it out, we're saying, "Okay, there's gonna be a fee for that."
Okay.
Unless there's something wrong with it.
Right, well, no, if we, yeah, if we have it tested, and it comes back fine, they're paying a fee.
Well, I had, I complained and told them mine basically was, I was reporting zeros, so they've changed it out.
Right, no, you did the right thing.
You did, too. You didn't have to pay. Yeah, they didn't charge me 25 bucks.
No.
Well, but that is, I think that there's a difference between saying, "Hey, I want a new meter," versus...
Being honest.
I think it's broke.
Yeah, I think it's broke.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on this?
I would move that we adopt option B as a, an amendment to this proposed fee rate, fee schedule.
Do I have a second?
And is that about adopting everything else, right?
And everything else, yes.
So adopting the, let me, let me word this for you.
I thought that would be a separate vote.
So adopting the fee schedule as proposed with the following amendment, that the airport hangar fees be represented by option B, the paragraph stating that they will be set by square footage, et cetera.
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That's timestamped at seven, or...
Six?
Six thirty. Six thirty.
See? It's not just me.
It's contagious.
All right. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on adopting an ordinance on FY 2021, 2022 annual operating budget. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the annual operating budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion?
We need a little clarification. We need to know, we need to write down the rate we're voting on.
No, no, this is the tax rate, this is the...
Operating budget.
Operating budget.
Yeah, the operating budget has to come first.
Oh, okay, excuse me, I'll draw my objection.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Now, consider and take appropriate action on adopting an ordinance levying the tax rate for the city of Castroville, Texas for the year, for the tax year 2021.
And there was some question about, did we get that right, the tax year 2021? And the answer is yes. It was confusing to me, too, because we spent the whole time talking about the FY 22 budget, but the fact of the matter is that when we pay our taxes in January, we're paying on the prior year. So you're actually, so when we adopt the tax rate, it's always for the prior year. So this is the FY 21, if you want to think about it that way, 2021 tax rate, because it will affect that bill, the one that we get...
The one from calendar year 2021.
Yes.
All right. Do we have discussion on this?
I don't think you have a motion yet, do you?
No. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt a tax rate of 0.5233, which has also been called in the briefings, the historical tax rate.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I feel like, I feel like the mayor in this situation, I'm the last one to want to pay more taxes. I pay a lot of them, but we've been sitting on our heels too long.
We're gonna get a lot of bang for the buck on a small increase.
We gotta, we gotta get some work done and this is the way to get it done. And hopefully it won't be too painful for everybody that's under 65.
This doesn't even appear, I mean, this doesn't impact our, what, what's going on countywide. So, I mean, the majority of our local property taxes don't stay in Castroville, so.
So to be clear, this is the, this is the historical, this is the same tax rate that we had in 2018?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to look.
This is 2019, historical tax rate from 2019.
Thank you. It is not the maximum tax rate that we're allowed to. So just wanted to be clear with everybody. All right. Any other discussion?
The other discussion is, and, and this is a question I was going to ask earlier, Scott, and correct me if I'm wrong. The only way the city can keep up with the cost of living increases as we know it individually is to raise our tax rate. Because, just because our property goes up, if the property goes up, our tax rate goes down.
That's correct. So, so.
So.
Yes. So doing, if you do nothing else, when you, the, the tax rate necessary to continue to, to keep the government running, it almost necessarily, you have to increase the rate a little bit year over year, because it's not, it's not going to be enough to keep up with inflation. Now, there are other things, other strategies the cities can employ, and that's what, you know, we're talking about is, well, how do we increase tourism? How do we get, basically import taxpayers to determine form of tourism and sales tax? How do we get more people paying sales tax? Now, we're hampered because we don't get as much sales tax as we prob, as we would otherwise, because we've got the ESD that's eating a portion of that, right? And again, glad we have the ESD. That's not a dig on them at all. It just is a fact. So we have to work a little bit harder to get more sales tax dollars and work a little bit harder to get that tourist, those tourism dollars locally. So it's not the only strategy. Obviously, we want to employ everything we can to increase revenues, but property taxes a big portion. It's about half of our revenue.
So our expenses go up because our, our inflation goes up.
Everything goes up.
Our cost of rate and cost of being able to do business goes up. We pay our employees more salary. We, we, cars, our, our fleet is more expensive, gasoline's more expensive, everything goes up.
All the, yeah, all the goods and resources we purchase, just like your home, everything we buy, when there's inflation, we also have to pay more, whether it's paper towels or oil or whatever.
So when we say it's gone up seven cents, or five cents, or whatever, I think Pete, my misconception was is that, well, why does the city have to raise my tax rate? My, the value of my house is going up, therefore the city's getting more money. And that's not the case. Because the way the state has it is that if your property goes, value goes up, the tax rate automatically goes down. And.
Revenue neutral.
So we're revenue neutral. So the only way we can get above and, and try to keep up with inflationary rises is raise tax rates. And the other, which is really an important discussion we made, is that we are going to have a lot of more property come onto the, come into our tax base as these developments to the east of us come in. And we're going to have to be able to handle that additional expense of those additional citizens because our expenses are going to go up. And at the same time, we're trying to deal with this older infrastructure that we really need to take care of. Because, so I guess I'm in favor of the, and I'm going to say seven cent hike, which is the highest one, but that's just me personally, because I do think we have infrastructure problems here and we need to get busy about taking care of this. Because we haven't been raising rates to keep up with the cost of living or, or inflationary index. If you look at what our tax rates versus inflationary index, we're way behind. And, and the only reason we have money in the budget is that our previous city administration, the way it's been, is they weren't able to handle the projects we wanted them to handle. So we built up these funds because it's not that we didn't have funds to do it, it's just we didn't have it. Now we have you on board, we can move forward with this stuff. So, so no, I don't like paying more in property taxes, but I, I do think that we, that's just another, I, I do think we need to, to push and, and try to get back up toward our, our cost of living as, as a city or inflation index as a city.
Councilman Carey?
I think this is a good compromise between where we are and where we could be. I mean, of course, we could push it to the max, max rate before we had to go to a vote, but I think this is a good compromise. I think it'll give us a chance to accomplish some projects and, you know, test the waters. So I'm for it.
And I, I would even say that slightly differently, that test the waters, this is give us a chance to prove accountability.
Well, test our waters.
Yes, test our waters, right.
Everybody said everything. And I'm, I'm in agreement. We, we've got to do something. I mean, we can't, can't sit on our heels anymore. Like people have said, we've got to fix our streets and our drainage. And I'm not for raising taxes either, but just a little bit.
I don't like paying taxes.
I don't either.
Nobody does.
But I don't mind paying in a few extra bucks a month so that we can have nice streets, so that we can do this. I think that's a good compromise.
Fix what's broke.
All right. So I have a motion and a second.
I haven't got a chance to talk.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I have done this two, three times tonight.
I just made the motion. I didn't get to discuss. I'd like to start by saying that we don't get nothing for nothing. And we, we have been looking at this very hard. And I've heard from my constituents, nobody wants to raise taxes, but I, for one, speaking for myself, the three years that I've sat on the council, we've done a lot of talk, but we haven't done a lot of action. And I see here an opportunity to do something significant. And I'm in favor of raising taxes. And if the people in my district want to vote me out, that's their prerogative. But I want to get something done. And I think if we continue the way we had been going in the past few years, we kept lowering the tax rate, and then we complained because we had no money to spend. The inflation rate was, or the, the consumer price index was announced today. For the last 12 months, it's 5.4%. So we're going to be faced with big challenges in the coming year, because it's not going to go down, it's going to go up. And there's going to be parts of our budget that are going to be adversely affected. So we need to be thinking, how are we going to get through this most difficult 12 months that's coming? We've seen it already in several contracts that we've recently discussed in public meetings, where the, the amount that was bid was way, way over what we were expecting. That's the norm. I got a hole in front of my house that's in there for two weeks, open sewage. We couldn't find a contractor who would even come and fix it until today. And our equipment can't fix it. It's too deep. Now, I want to give the city the tools they need to get the job done. We've got good people. They just need the right equipment. And I want to give them support. And the budget that they have created, I think the city staff has done an excellent job. And I probably have caused them more consternation than anyone, because I've written them numerous letters with numerous questions. And they always give me full, complete answers. And in most cases, they're able to change my mind. And, and I'm very pleased with the budget and I like to compliment the city staff. It's a good budget. And, and I, I fully support raising the tax to this level of 0.5233.
Councilman Dyer, just make your point. If the consumer price index was 0.45, you said?
5.4 today.
5.4. This is an increase of point, of 5.6%.
Yeah.
And that's for the last 12 months.
Yeah.
Councilman Sherret? I don't want to skip over you two.
No, I already said my piece.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. This has been very challenging, but productive. All right, next item. Where are we? Consider and take action on adopting an ordinance ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Castroville.
So this is the record vote or?
This is a standard process that we have to do each year with the ordinance after you take the vote for the.
So I.
Property tax.
Make a motion to adopting the ordinance ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget for the use and support of municipal government for the city of Castroville.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
And now you're going to take a record vote. So you'll actually say ayes and nays.
We've got to go.
Aye and a.
All right. Let's start over with District 5 now.
I vote aye. District 4, Todd Sherhart votes aye.
Bill King, District 3, votes aye.
Paul Carey votes aye.
Gina Martinez, District 1, votes aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on awarding a contract for auditing services for the city of Castroville.
So we, it's just that time of year, that's not really that time of year, but that time in our contract, one of the things that is just recommended as part of good financial practices is every now and again, every five years or so, three to five years, go out and get a bank, renew your bank contract, renew your auditor contract. So we did that. We sent an RFP out and got several proposals back. One thing to note, specific to professional services, is it's not price-based. You can't ask for pricing, which we did, but it really is based on the firm's ability. And we had some very good firms. We have one out of state, and that's because they are out of state, we did not grade them as highly. The other two in-state ones, we felt were both, either one of them could represent the city very well. And what the staff is recommending is the current, the group that we currently have, going back with them, they've done an excellent job, and their pricing's actually better than it was. So.
They've been with us for almost a decade, is that correct?
Yeah.
Close.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move that we award the contract for auditing services to the firm of Armstrong and Vaughn.
Do I have a second?
I second that. Any discussion?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on awarding a contract for the bank depository for the city of Castroville.
This is a little bit easier because there's only one proposal. It's with our existing bank. But as was the case with our auditor, and I don't want to say it this way, but you gotta, you gotta keep people honest. And certainly people have done that to me over the, of course, my lifetime when we, when I've been in negotiations. But in, in that case, we did go back out. They actually did lower their costs to the city by $72,000 a year. So our banking relationship will be much better going forward with the same bank.
They've done a lot to support us.
Very nice.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move we award the contract for the bank depository to Castroville State Bank.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Me too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Hey, Paul.
Yeah, it's only been since June.
Next item is report on paper streets from Councilmember Paul Carey.
I'm going to make a, on that last thing, because we voted to keep the same people, we don't have to go and sign those.
Cards again.
Cards again.
That was your only reason for those 30 accounts.
Do you, how do you want to do this? Do you have a jumper?
I actually added something since I gave you that pump box. So I'd like to have a tap, the plug.
Paper streets. Do you have it over there set up?
Yeah. Or I can move forward?
No, it reaches.
You're going to have to go over closer to it.
I'm going to.
Is one?
No, I don't want to get started on that.
I don't.
Maybe her, her, you want to bend it?
Well, certainly, yeah, I wouldn't be talking.
Pass it back this way.
Two of you.
Oh, you were being facetious.
He's going to take all the good stuff.
Yes, it was. Well, if you all get finished with the good stuff, pass it back this way.
Oh, you said no.
Let me get my stuff.
I do that work for the team.
I wish that was Scott.
It was who?
Scott.
That's actually from our retreat.
I'll just give you the hard game. I'm going to check out my, every time quick because for some reason it's down.
All right, so now.
No, I'm not there.
For some reason.
You got on the other side.
Okay. I'm ready.